Are you going to be at our, um, panel meeting?
Yeah.
Day one.
Okay, so.
That's good.
Whenever you need to bail, you can jump out and go.
Okay, yeah, I get it.
Okay, so let's get started here. I'm hopeful as we get here, but we'll get started, do a roll call. Jill Menard.
Here.
Michelle Allen.
Yep.
Frank Gimmins here. Lloyd Johnson absent. Melissa Goodbro.
Here.
For present. Now, let's go ahead and open the public meeting for the Parkview Bonds Public Hearing. Are there any comments for the public meeting? Any discussion from the council?
Do I need to do a little intercontrol? Wendy, I guess I should ask you, did you have enough signature pages for everything?
I think so.
Okay, great. Following orders, this was, uh, so we have two resolutions before tonight, Mayor Council. And you've seen this before for the Parkview Care Center in Buffalo. And as you know, you can, um, cities can issue revenue obligations that have absolutely no, um, authority to come after the city for any taxes or any payments. Um, you can do that for 501(c)(3)'s and hospitals and other qualified institutions. So normally, uh, these borrowing entities, it's cheaper for them, or sometimes it is, to get a tax exempt obligation issued through a city than to go to a local bank and get a taxable obligation, and that's what's happening here. There is a bank that's participating in this, and it's twenty-seven million dollar project, but the city is issuing ten million dollars in 2015, and this, and I've been working with their attorney to deal with the, um, the documentation on that. The city will get repaid for any time that you've had to pay out of pocket for that, or any dollars you've paid out of pocket for that. So this will, this will close in early December, this, this bond issue. The, the first resolution is just a, there's a requirement to hold a public hearing on a multifamily housing development plan, and that is what Exhibit A is in this resolution, beginning at page seven of your packet. And, um, this is really just a, I didn't, the Parkview's attorney drafted this and I revised it a little bit, but this is just a template for how these things are. And so it really has nothing to do with the city in the end, because it's a Buffalo project, but it's kind of a, um, a favor, I guess, for the city to, to do this on behalf of Buffalo, because, um, well, I understand the city of Buffalo is spending a lot of money on their own bonds, and they don't have bank qualification levels to spend on this project, whereas the city can spend up to ten million dollars in, in a year on that, so. Uh, any problems with this bond issue later, any failure to repay is, the risk is borne by the borrower, Parkview Care Center, and not by the city. Um, any audits or anything by the IRS or the state, uh, of course, they would have to hire an attorney to deal with that, and that's their issue, not our issue. This, the city is technically the bond issuer under federal tax requirements, and so we've made it clear that if the IRS says, oh, the city of Montrose is being audited for this Parkview Care Center, uh, bond obligation, um, the city isn't liable for any repayment, and it doesn't matter, it doesn't affect the city's credit rating at all, that's, that's how these things go. And if I had to take any time to look at that in the future, they would have to repay that, not the city, so that's pretty much the extent of it.
Any other comments, discussion, input? Hearing now, now, close the public hearing. And, uh, we'll reopen or go right back into the council special meeting. And I have a motion to approve 2015-26.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2015-26 approving multifamily housing program.
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Have a motion to approve 2015-27.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, Resolution 2015-27.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries four oh.
Geez, I probably didn't need to say anything.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a short break so I can sign those documents and go on. You don't have to stay here all day.
I had a decent drive, it wasn't bad at all. You have to fill out this stuff right here, Andy. The four who voted yes, or?
They can do that, I think.
We have one other question, Andy. On one of the documents. Our copies we can sign later.
You have a pair?
I can have. Initial yes?
Maybe, maybe. I haven't decided yet. It's weather breaks.
This is supposed to work.
One of each one.
It's supposed to be raining, turn to snow Thursday into Friday.
I didn't write anything.
It rained about four inches. And my buddy here, or my buddy here, don't put it. Margaret or Maggie.
You can call me Maggie.
They moved on, they gave you all the, 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 the,[556.83]
This is the first assessment of it.
Yeah, we didn't.
Nothing else on that chart.
I was gonna say, I don't remember any assessments down there.
There was a notification that we will be potentially assessed for work further coming down the road. Especially if we acquired the preserves.
Can I help you? Special councilman, yeah.
A special one or?
Yeah, you can come in.
Seat right over there.
You can join us.
Yep, you can join us.
Hey Wendy, just so, just our clarification, I mean, they have this huge list here of people that are paying, but the City of Montrose is on here many times.
That's all of our parcels in the preserve?
Yep, but it's not, this whole net benefits column is not, that's not what we're talking about. Okay, so I was just, I looked at it and I thought, well, I'm not gonna do the math, but that's way more than 2,000 or 60.
It's our portion of, that would be the total benefit, but we're only paying that percentage of the benefit. So, ours is 2,560.
That works.
So I don't know if we want a motion to do that or, we can put it on the accounts payable list and do what we want. Whatever works.
I'll make a motion to pay the assessment portion for ditch 38 assessed in City of Montrose.
This has got the date to 14th and 15th, is that for last year or this year, or is it for?
Public hearing was held last year on November 20th, 2014. And they're just now first putting the bill out. So if we pay it on December 30th, it won't be put on our tax statements per se. Otherwise, we'll get a tax statement for every single property in the preserve that we have to pay the tiny portion for.
Well, that'd be fun, Wendy.
We'd like to pay that early, eh?
Yeah.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 to pay the ditch assessment. Okay, committee of dinner. Need to know who's actually hosting the committee of dinner we're having in December, right? That was the one for?
Yep.
Okay. Who's actually hosting that?
Yeah, we're unsure of that right now.
Okay, because in order to use the city's license, the food license, it has to be sponsored by the city. It's not transferable to a person or a place, so the city must be going to sponsor the event in order for someone else to use the license. That's what we got from the public health administration, Minnesota Public Health.
The more I thought about it after the meeting, I thought, you know, when we did all this two years or three years ago with all the licenses, I remember talking to them about the lions and the lioness and everybody sharing a license. And I remember something about, no, you can't do that, whoever's sponsoring it.
Right.
And I know the fire department, fire relief even, has to be separate. So I thought, no, I'm just gonna check to make sure before we get too far into this, because I don't want us to get in trouble. And that's what I got for a response was, in order to use it, you have to, it has to be put on by the city. So if it's not being put on by the city, you can't use it.
Park and Rec could sponsor it. And then that would be good, like I said, have to be sponsored by the city.
I feel like we should yes, change it.
Yeah.
Change the scope of it.
Yeah.
Only because of timing issues.
Okay.
And preparedness issues. So we wouldn't need it at all.
You could still, you could still get a license if you wanted to just put it on yourself. You can still get a license, you could call them.
That's not our plan now.
Oh, okay.
We're changing the whole plan.
Okay, so we, so we just need a motion not to use it probably then, because at the last?
Well, what the plan is gonna be now is to do Christmas caroling cookies, cider, that kind of stuff. We don't need a license for that, do we?
If it's open to the public and providing food, yeah, we do. Anytime it's a public event.
But then you could, if you wanted to do it and sponsor it, Park and Rec sponsored or something, it's up to you guys. Because then you could just buy the packaged cookies and make them to the cider and just add that to the license, as long as you said, like, City of Montrose, Park and Rec.
Jill's gonna have to be careful of her skate date then, too, that you got.
That's in January, right? Right, yeah.
You need the license for that, too.
This one's only good for this year, though, correct?
And I have the application on the desk so we can fill it out for this.
For the next one, for next year. Yeah, yeah, those expire. So, yeah, so we're just turning it down a big scale.
Good, okay.
So.
So Park and Rec will sponsor it, and we use the city license, and it will be a caroling cookies and cider event.
Yeah.
What day will that be on?
The 19th of December. Wait, no, 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 we're gonna change it to the midweek, because Jill's not in town the 19th.
So who's putting this on?
We're saying Park and Rec. Park and Rec is willing?
Say that would be a very good idea.
What's that? We should do it for Park and Rec. It's what Zane, if they're willing. If they're willing, we're just gonna change it to?
Who does the breakfast with Santa Claus?
Montrose days, December 3rd, that's this next Saturday. Not this week, the next Saturday.
Do we have the license or that's under what?
They get through.
For this, well, we have to convey with?
You have a meeting coming up for Park and Rec, so you can always get your license. Once you figure that out with Park and Rec, you can.
Yeah.
I think if you just call, you'll meet at the Department of Health and tell them what you wanna add. That's, she just adds it and sends a new license out to us.
We could do it on December 22nd, it's the first day of winter.
Well, you guys can decide that at Park and Rec and then just?
But we should decide it soon before the first, when the?
That's my biggest, that's my concern.
The newsletter goes out?
Newsletters for January, February, March.
Oh, yeah. So it doesn't matter. We just have to have it in by December.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're gonna be printed on the 15th for the next three months, so it doesn't matter.
But we'll still get it figured out, even if we just shoot an email or something.
Tentatively 22nd, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion about tasking our vendors, actually consultants, for individual members. The concern that I have, and I've touched base with Sean and Wendy in the process of this, is that individual members cannot, or individual council members cannot task vendors when it's gonna cost the city an amount for the vendor. In other words, I could not task Andy to say, okay, I want you to look into whether a food vendor can purchase this land right here. Okay, I can't do that individually, I haven't come before council. And the only way that we could do that would be if it went through one of the authorized purchasing agents, which is Sean and Wendy right now, but will be Maggie, okay, so the department heads. And they have spending authority.
Okay, or an official motion.
And or, or it would be an official motion by the council in order to task Andy so that he could put billable hours to what I asked you for. Now, if I call Andy, their contract says I call him anytime. As long as I don't task him individually, there's no charge for that. Okay? And I think we're okay with responses that come as a result of that, because that's built into the contract as well, right?
Yeah, and as long as everybody understands that demarcation line, which it can be a little bit confusing, you know, the goal is to, if anyone calls, you're not gonna hear a cha-ching in the background and your meter starts. I mean, that's not the intent of any of this. So, we've always, we've always had, yeah, we've always had with other cities where we, you say, oh, do you think we can do, you know, X, Y, Z? And I would say, well, you know, in my past experience or with experience with other attorneys here, yeah, you can, but you're gonna have to think about, you know, this. And then, okay, thank you, bye. And then it's, okay, well, that's not gonna show up on your bill, that's just a standard service. We want you to, if you have a concern, pick up the phone, that's staff or council. But if I, if the council person says, well, can you do that research and look into that? Well, then that triggers the whole, okay, well, did one of the purchasing agents allow for this? Or was this talked about at the, at the meeting?
Right.
The other example, Greg, was, we talked about drones a little bit, and that was basically a consensus of the council to, you know, at least take a little bit of a look in this, and then, you know, now we have all these other issues. That's probably gonna have to be delayed anyway for other reasons with the federal authority on that. But that's, that's the other example, and then, then it'll be known at the meeting and understood and see that.
I think, I think what we should probably do is send a memo to our vendors and let them know that in the event that an individual council member tasked them for something that hasn't been addressed to the council, that hasn't been a vote by the council, that that vendor should then circle back to the department heads to get approval for billing.
And other cities do this, some have policies, some have written. So, I mean, we don't necessarily have to go through the exercise of coming up with a policy that you want to pass and sign. We can do that if you want. I know River Falls over in Wisconsin, everything goes through the city administrator, which is a little bit, I think, tough to handle, because they have more department heads, more staff. So, the city administrator kinda gets overloaded with doing that, so maybe they should change that. But that's one example of that. The other, probably the third way that we would get, as an attorney's office or as the engineer, but I'm just thinking in my perspective, would be just a call from Sean, or Maggie, or Wendy, as far as, you know, this, this came to our attention for whatever issue, financing issue or something. Or obviously if someone is threatening to sue or something, and I have to look at that. So that's kind of straight from the staff. So you have individual council member through the department heads, the council as a whole, and then straight from staff. And the, straight from staff, you know, it's the same for all cities, that's never, that's not a change here. So does that make sense to everybody?
Still, I, sorry. So, with our last council meeting, when we, I asked you about the cost of that application?
Yeah.
And I haven't heard nothing back yet?
No, I'm sorry, I emailed back that today.
I can still call you and say, hey, what's up with that?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And I emailed that back, back this afternoon before I left, because I wanted to see if Mike had anything on that, he didn't. So I found that, so.
So that's not?
Right, that would not be included, yeah. And you know, and I'll, I'll counsel Mike on this, too, to at least tell you on the phone or on an email or something, that, that that's not gonna, I don't know how you wanna hear that in language, but that's not gonna be part of the final, final bill. But if you have any questions on a bill, yeah, that's, we're not gonna charge, obviously, for that, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So what we need then is a memo sent to the vendors to that effect, that, that, that any billable hours or billable time or billings will need to be approved by our authorized spending authorities or have been reviewed by the council at an appropriate council meeting, so we have a consensus. Who would like to take that on?
Oh, Maggie, I'll work on that.
Shouldn't be that big of a deal.
Shouldn't be.
It wouldn't have been voted, told verbally, so.
Yep, so we need, we need a motion for that, I would think.
I don't know if we need a motion.
Just a memorial, I suppose. So I mean, so we, just a killer, so this would obviously be myself, or just the attorney's office and general engineer's office, assuming, and then?
Anywhere vendors.
Auditors, maybe, auditors, you don't really probably call them, but?
Even Plaer.
EDA. Yep.
So since I have a lot of questions on your billing, I'm still allowed to call and ask?
Continue, please.
Continue, can you?
Just call Mike, not me.
So I move that.
Double up on Andy, take some wild one.
I move that we send a memo to our vendors and consultants, advising them that if they're billed by an individual, or if they're tasked by an individual council member to take on something that's gonna result in a billing to the city, that they, that has not been discussed at council and has not been the result of a council vote to do so, that they circle back and speak with our department heads who have the spending authority to ensure that that billing will be paid.
Did you get all that?
On tape.
Okay. I feel bad, I have to go.
Have fun.
Yeah, have fun. See you Monday.
Come on in.
Yeah, Mike. All right, wait, I don't know what the rules are.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Take your memo. Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Now we're into the big dogs, fighting the budget.
And what I can tell you is, the last final levy certification is in your package. I did not change it from the original one, from the preliminary. I left it as it was, because I wasn't sure what you wanted to see. The long sheets are the expenditure budget, what sheet that we used? And then there's some shorter sheets are the revenue.
I don't have short sheets.
These?
They're in the packet.
There.
That's these.
Page 35 through page 45 is the revenue. And then the other ones aren't numbered, the long ones aren't numbered. The long ones, everything that affected, that affects the levy, you've seen previously at your, at the preliminary budget meeting. The only thing I changed is if you look on the first page, I highlighted volunteer expense and employees. I decreased the full-time employees by 1,000 and added volunteer expense under the council. And then if you go to the Park and Rec, which is partway through, it's the 230 accounts. I took the volunteer expense out of there and I just added it to the recreational programs, which is our Spark, Open Gym, Partying the Park, all that kind of stuff. So I didn't really change anything at all, I just shifted the money a little bit. So it didn't change anything as far as the levy. That was the only, the other parts that were added back into this then were all the enterprise funds, which do not affect the levy. It's just to show you how we budgeted. So I guess what we need to know from you is, do you wanna leave the levy as it is with the preliminary, which was about a 4.9% increase, 43, $44,000 difference, $44,000 increase over last year? Or do you want it to be something else? And if you want it to be something else, you just need to let us know, and Sean and I will go back and do whatever you really wanna see.
Can we change it to zero?
That's up to you guys.
What kind of room do we have in the budget? I mean, you guys have gone through this pretty, pretty in-depth right now. What kind of room is there in there? I know we typically plan for contingencies, and we budget so that we have funds to be able to handle those contingencies, because they should come up. In other words, if we lose a water name or something of that nature.
That's all under the general, that's under the enterprise funds.
Yep.
As of right now, the enterprise funds were not requesting any increases.
And we're tight on one of those, correct?
The storm waters.
Storm waters, mhm.
Okay. Well, the largest wiggle room that there is is attorney.
Somebody knows there's a big increase.
Mhm, that's?
I'm assuming there was a reason for that.
What's that?
There was a reason for that.
As we were doing the preliminary budget in September, the council was on pace of going to that number.
I think as of, through October, we are at about 35,000. However, now you have to remember that there was about $10,000 in there for the settlement with Barb. If you take that out, we'd be back down to 25, which is still more than what we budgeted for this last year.
But we're also gonna have union negotiations.
And that's what we, if you look under, under here where it says legal fees, which is on the second page of the long sheets.
Is it the, the 5,000?
See where it says legal?
40,000.
And we did 40,000 and 5,000 for this next year.
Yep.
We had it at 20,000 and 10. We did 10 because we thought with union negotiations. So we can use some of that to do like a budget amendment for this current year. Next year, we've dropped it down to 5,000, because we probably won't really have anything. But we can, we can bring down that 40,000. You can bring it down to 30,000, because that's, if you take out Barb's 10,000.
And then we still have a little extra in case.
So that would give you 10,000 right there.
Yep.
Just a suggestion, I don't, I mean.
Nope.
I think we should drop that to 2K, if that's what we should do.
Is that just the, that's the one with the double asterisk?
Yeah.
And then you leave, you leave it at what, five for the union part?
Mhm. I do have to, if we have any carryover then next year.
I do have to make the council aware that the National Guard has been in contact with us for the regional park.
Yay.
And they're looking at possibly doing that in the 2016 project.
Awesome.
That's about all I know.
Good.
Did they get in contact with Justin?
They actually got in contact with Wendy, and she's forwarded on to Justin. We're trying to schedule a meeting to meet with them.
Do we have, in the event that goes in 2016, part of that agreement was that we would put them up and cover room and board?
They're 75 grand in there for that.
So you certainly don't wanna cut that.
No. No.
If we get $400,000 worth of grading for 75,000. We might have a little bit of room in the wages. Under this section on the very first page, it says treasurer. I brought it down to 71, it wasn't 72, and I brought it down to 71. We can maybe bring it down a couple more if we need to. I budgeted Maggie higher than what she, I hired her at less than what, however, all of her wages don't go in here, they get spread out over some of the other ones. But we could, there, in under planning and zoning, we would have a little bit of room if you wanted to.
About 2K?
Yeah.
Two or three.
What about that 25,000 for the new sirens under emergency management?
We weren't going to be moving through with that at this time.
I don't know that there was ever a decision made, it was discussed that we could potentially move one.
And Matt had a recommendation that we simply move the sirens?
Well, his recommendation to the council was to purchase a new one, but then that triggered Sean to look into things. And then we found that there's considerable amount of overlap of our three sirens. So, moving would probably be more?
Beneficial?
Beneficial to us at this time, and cheaper, obviously.
Absolutely, yeah. So can we know about what it would cost to move those?
I would say a preliminary, we could probably decrease that by 10,000.
Okay. And then page that one.
Page four.
Four.
Four of the big ones.
101, 520, 500.
Okay, so dropping that to 15K.
So that's, even just those two, that's 20,000 alone, and then we did wages.
22K is what I'm looking at.
That's half of.
That would bring it down to about, about a 2.5% increase over last year.
Didn't we, we did one last year, what was it, a little?
3%.
3%? Yes.
So if you did those, that 22,000 there, it would bring it down about 2, 2.5% increase over last year.
Which is the last, not the last phase, but the, the next phase for seal coating is to finish out Rolling Meadows. And that's a significant increase there from last year, 30,000. I just don't wanna be two blocks short and then not completing that phase, so. Primarily, that's what that is right there, is the difference.
But you have that figured in.
Correct, that's it.
And we've got the first year on the CIP budget here already?
Hmm, CIP, no.
We're still on anything that we have planned.
Well, we did some, because we, we increased our auditing and accounting services from 30,000 to 47,000. So we included about $15,000 in there for the CIP and 2,000 for the actuarial.
We're having to shift around priorities on the CIP as far as utility-wise, because we keep getting letters from the state of Minnesota that their projects are gonna be coming up. And Highway 25 project in 2018, they're gonna redo from Montrose to Watertown. And then Highway 12, we just got a letter last week, they're gonna redo from Delano to Howard Lake in 2021. So we're kinda having to juggle some things around.
Let me be able to piggyback on top of that, when they got the ground open.
Right.
Yeah, makes sense. That's a good point.
That'd save us from doing that currently, none of them.
Potentially, yes.
4.7% increases, which if we decrease 22, it brings us down to 234, which is right in the middle of the year.
Timeframe on other projects that we thought were more priorities than these, we may have to switch them around a bit, so.
I guess it's entirely to you guys, if you want.
Like?
What you want it to be.
Front community center street.
That's the purpose of this, is what you said, what you want it to be.
Are the community center, are you gonna repay it at Park and Rec? We already got the money set aside for that, right?
We've got half of it now, and then half of it will be next year.
Because we didn't, so you said it would be about 20,000?
It's about 40. I was a little late on my estimate. I just about fell out of my chair.
I know they were gonna give us a good deal, if they, if they were gonna do it this fall, rather.
Well, I thought so, too.
It ended up actually being more expensive this fall than it is if we wait until next spring, because they are so busy, they couldn't do it again.
It wasn't worth their while to pull off projects to come through there, so.
Any other concerns or issues that you need to look at? So now we would be at 2.5%.
Be about 2.5.
I feel better with that than I do with 4.9.
I do, too.
Does the other communities?
Yeah, 2.5 is actually a very good number. A 20, that would be $22,800 increase over last year, which is pretty minimal, if you figure out all the time you want. I can tell you my township taxes are increasing by 19%. I sure hope their final budget feels a little bit better.
You know, one year in the U.S., ours went up 20%.
Yeah, mine's 19, mine's a 19% increase, so I hope it changes at the final.
Yeah, they're usually number digits every year up there.
I plan on going somewhere.
So we can take a walk? Go hunting? Sure. I'll try and kill them.
They'll tell him you had a time.
Fishing.
Okay, anything else on the budget, as we discussed it?
Any other thoughts? Everybody comfortable with 2.5, or you got other thoughts?
Okay, I need to entertain a motion.
I will bring that to the final, actually, you don't need a motion, because?
I need?
No, because what I'll do is I'll just change the final levy certification. It'll be presented at the December 14th council meeting, because we have to hold a public hearing that night for the truth in taxation hearing. So if you're all under general consensus of the 2.5, then that's what we'll make an out act and bring it to the council meeting on the 14th, at 2.5.
Everyone agreed to that?
Either.
Have any opposed? Sense. Okay. Um. Can't discuss that one, can I? I thought I may do that.
Uh, no. But it's not really a council topic, I guess.
No, it's not, we'll just send an email out, reference to it.
Discuss it in case, everyone. It's not really major.
Okay, anything else, to go to the city? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second? You didn't make it.
Nope, I remember.
Lloyd?
I was gonna make.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Yeah.
I vote aye, which means adjourned.
Thanks, Joe.
Yes.
Let's meet.
Me, too.